Six thirty. Six thirty two, we call this uh meeting of Imperial Planet Commission to order, a roll call at this time.
Commissioner Abadi.
Here.
Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Harvey.
Here.
Chairperson Hammerness.
Here.
Please pledge. Stan, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda at this time? That you have.
There are no adjustments to the agenda.
I would like to make the adjustment of the consent calendar being pulled. I am not happy with the minutes and I would like them removed and repaired before brought back. Does that need to be in the form of motion?
You you don't have to vote, but you're more than welcome to.
Okay. Vote if you'd like. With that being said, we'll go to uh B one public appearances. A matter is not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson at that time state your name and address for the record. Chairperson reserves right to place a limit, a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here that would like to address us that is with an item that is not currently on the agenda? I'll take that as a no. And we've already dealt with the consent calendar. So that's done. So. At this time, we're going to uh resume the public hearing on variance twenty two dash zero two uh for Georgia Burnell. Allow the deviation development side backyard sta- setback standards for continue to use some existing patio. Located at six forty three Costa Azul Street, APN zero six four dash two seven two dash zero zero six. This time I'm resuming resuming public hearing.
Mister Hammerness, we have a uh Mister Brady is gonna step out and declare a conflict.
Someone let the chair and the planning commissioner know I I own I own property, I reside within five hundred feet of this prop- of the property that's the subject of this hearing. And so under the Political Reform Act, I am going to uh not participate in this matter and step out of the room.
But free to recuse yourself. And take him with you.
He's being escorted out.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Wow.
The other recusers? All right. Staff, do you have any uh what do you have to report? Anything additional from the last time we were here?
Um, yes, um commissioners, the um after the meeting that we had on February eighth twenty twenty three, um staff, um um got a lot of more information on on the on the project. Uh, we also met with the resident um to come up some with some options. So uh we explained them what the two issues here are, you know, the variance, you have to have specific findings and you also have to comply with the building code. And I have uh our building inspector, so he can uh briefly um give you the options under the the building code.
Good evening. Um, I met with the resident on uh February tenth. I gave him two options. Um, one of the options being is that the variance needs to be granted uh for him to keep the posts where they are and he would then have to cut off the overhang. Um, the other option would be for him to move the post to the three feet uh from the property line and the overhang still needs to be cut, so it only uh projects twelve inches. So I did give him those two options. Um, and that's pretty much it.
I guess, what was his feeling?
It it would like to be where it's at now. Um.
If 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 a variance is granted and and he will like if he leaves the post where he's at, he regardless, he would need to um cut off the overhang. Uh, overhang and the residential building code cannot be within two feet from the property line.
That has to be or we have other or?
We don't have any other options. That's it's a matter of state law and there's even if we someone is um wants to appeal that decision, um, the appeal board, um, it's not in a position to waive any of the requirements of the building code.
Have you have you gone over these with him and and shown him to the applicant, the the code sections? And I I think if you have them available, if you could read them, um, if they're readily accessible to this um council on the rec.
Uh, yes, in uh the resident, uh the California residential code in uh section three oh two, it's a fire resistance construction. It has a a table. And there it talks about uh the walls, uh the projections. Um, so anything uh greater than the five feet requires doesn't require any fire resistance. And then uh on the projections, um, anything within two feet is not allowed. So that's right there states that the the overhangs cannot be within two feet from the property line. Um, any and then the overhangs from two feet to five feet, they need to have a uh one hour fire resistance rating. Uh, there's are some exemptions for that is which would be putting fire blocking, uh a metal patio uh would already have those ratings.
And a metal structure already?
Correct.
So it exceeds those ratings?
Correct.
Including the post, the poster aluminum as well?
Correct.
Or steel?
Yes, just the 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 building code, it it goes to the three feet. So that's why if the posts wanted to be where they are now, I think it's about two feet. The variance would be granted, would have to be granted tonight.
That's moving them or leaving them weird. Sorry, you lost me.
When you w- where they're at right now, you would have to grant a variance if and then if not, he would move the post to the three feet with and then he would still, he would cut the overhang, so it's only twelve inches.
Right, the fact that the overhang is blocked to the patio. Cause when it overhangs, he's got a blocking on there, so there's actually no.
Well, on on this structure, it does not have any blocking. It it's it's a metal structure.
It's gotta hang it, it hangs down on the eve. I mean, it comes down and loops, goes down like three feet. So they the eve isn't open.
Correct.
If it was on fire, it would go out one end or the other end. It's not gonna actually go over the fence, correct?
Correct, yes.
And that's all metal.
Athan, you mentioned the appi- appeal board wouldn't be able to appeal this. Who's who's the, is that the city council?
City council under for the building code, um, yes, that there they will have to take a look at the 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 item, but um under the law, uh they cannot waive any of the requirements under the building code. So that that's very specific.
Good question. So photo, page four of twelve, and it shows that the distance, it has a measuring tape and it shows the distance from the the fence. I'm taking it to the metal post of seventeen inches, which is under twenty four inches for two feet. So how are we figuring two feet?
We're talking the two feet, uh we're talking about the the uh projection. So if so you have an overhang, so you could do, uh you can leave it as is, but an overhang would not be allowed, so they will have to cut off um the overhang at that location. So.
And but where is it? Picture shows of the or?
It will be flush to the of posts. So what we're we're stating right now, it's the uh projection uh cannot be within twel- um twenty four inches from the property line. So in this case, he will not have any projection. It will be a straight line, no over.
You're saying the overhang is and another word for the overhang is the word projection.
Correct. I I do apologize for that.
Okay, so the projection cannot be within two feet. Okay, so the but the projection, okay, so the projection, that's the issue is the projection.
That is correct.
Okay, but the code for the city is three feet from the property line, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and this is seventeen inches, less than three feet.
Less than three feet, correct.
So how do we uh how do we uh balance or even um equate this that we're meeting the city code of three feet? But yet this projection where we cut off the the cover to be at seventeen inches for for under two feet.
So you have you have two issues here. Um, one would be the the building code. Under the building code, you will be allowed to to leave it as is with no projection uh and be fire rated and whatnot. This this is non combustible, so it it will comply under the residential code. Now, uh the other issue is the the uh findings uh to grant a variance. Um, in this case, uh we're recommending the three feet, we'll be back to the three feet, so you comply with the code. Uh, and um the findings, um you have to be very specific, especially if it's gonna be under a special privilege. Um, you know, this this property is, you know, it's it's not uh like a diamond shaped property. It's a square. It's pretty straightforward. So you have two two of those things and 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 the the commission will um we need to um be very specific on those findings.
Um. Cause this lot is probably similar to the other lots in this development. Um, in my opinion, it seems to me that even if we went through and and went through the findings and somehow stretched the cover, so it would fit onto the container to to grant a variance. It seems to me it would set a precedent, so others could put up a patio without getting a permit and then come and say, well, you guys did it for this person. Why are you not letting me to do it? We heard that with respect to some other matter of a business, saying you guys let someone else do it, why can't you let us do it? It's about taking over a street or something like that. So that's my concern of setting a precedent.
So. I'm looking at the variance here. So we grant him a variance and he leave the post where they're at, right?
Uh uh that's an option.
And but yet he's gotta cut the eve back to where? I mean, it's almost right to the edge of the post now.
It will be a stray shot.
Which he's losing what? Eight inches? I mean, it's not even two feet if it goes straight up, right? I mean, it looking at the pictures. It's basically right on the edge. So what? I mean. Either way, we're not a, I mean, you said two feet, right?
Saying two feet, yes, but you you just eliminated the uh the projection, so that would not be applicable anymore.
Can I uh ask a quick question? So what you're, if if they were to build a wall, so eliminate the projection at ten inches, you're saying that complies with the building code if it's fire rated?
Correct, with no overhang.
So the only chart you're discussing, and I think that's part of the confusion re- relates to just that, so you cut that off or you build up to it, right? So you you're saying that you could actually go up to the fence line under the code if it's a straight wall all the way up?
With no projection.
Okay, just so that's clear.
Well, and based on what it looks like here right now, it's got a half a wall there already that's that's um fire rated. So if that wall went all the way down to the ground, would that constitute? A fire rated wall?
Because it's not a, it's non combustible.
Well, it's definitely non combustible.
The issue would have been uh or more of an issue would have been if it was uh uh wood.
Yes, but in this case it's not.
This case it's not.
And if it went all the way to the ground, then what does the eve matter? Because now the eve is not gonna be impinged if the wall goes all the way to the ground. So what does it matter if the eve is a few extra inches over?
Uh, it's building code.
Well, if it removes the eve, he doesn't have to go the rest of the way down. To me, we're we're like swatting at gnats now because it's not, one does not make one any better than the other. On folks, let's keep working these ideas.
I think we're only we're only we're stuck at two, right? One of two options.
This number three, the variance will not be a grant of special privilege in the neighborhood and will not allow you to build in a way that would not be allowed for someone else. So this is granting a special privilege to have this patio and if someone else comes in, what makes this special compared to someone else who builds the same way?
I think what's frustrating here is it's been here for so long, missed for so long and then mishandled after it was found to some degree. We can probably blame COVID on some of that because it was right at the beginning of the shutdown. Well, in this case, it it might actually be a little bit legitimate, but I'm only giving it a little bit.
I'm gonna express my opinion. This was like going to Vegas and rolling the dice. To say that it's been there for some time? The the fact is, it the steps should have been followed. If you if there was a patio in the back that went through the steps to get a permit, I don't understand the analysis of not following the same steps with respect to the side patio. Okay, since you already did the rodeo one time, you already know the loops that you could go through the rodeo a second time. That's my concern. And to say, well, it's been there all those years, oops, you rolled the dice and you got caught. You made a decision, you took a risk. That's my position. And I don't see how this side patio is special. Special to you, Mister Burnell, but not special to get a special privilege that will be denied to anybody else who follows the same track as you did. There in your neighborhood. That's that's one of the required findings for a variance to be issued.
Brown, would you come up here, please? What uh we'd like to hear some of your feelings on on this as far as what is some some things that you can work with or can or can't do in your opinion to help try to salvage some of this?
Well. I like the idea of if if you need the wall to go down to the floor, that's that's doable. I mean, I'll do whatever it takes to not hurt the patio or however you wanna play, but Mr. Body him said a mouthful earlier, you know, what can we do, right? She's reading the rules and I respect them. And I know, I don't know about the thing about everybody else is gonna want a variance because going back to what she said, that's why you will get a permit. I failed that. But nobody, maybe nobody else will when they see this, what happened here, right? So you stop it before it happens at the, you know, but I failed, I made a mistake, but I do wanna fix it. I'll do the wall, you know. If the if the fires br- problems there, I'll put fire extinguishers, whatever, I'll work any way you want, but the one the one that I thought was very interesting was that, that it's not, it's fireproof, it is the the heard Cody saying that and I spoke with him. Uh, and I've done a little research myself and this the the percentage rate of that thing uh burning is almost zero. I I read it and I I I've seen the other ones.
Right.
Um, all that on whatever I have to. Oh yeah, the other thing that made me that I was thinking about that you guys mentioned. What kind of wall Cody would does it would it would would uh would fix that? Would I have to build a break wall or what would have to be right there?
It it would just, it would just be the posts. You would just leave the posts the way they are.
But to make it uh?
Posts, the the posts would be classified under the wall category.
Oh, oh.
So you wouldn't have to install anything else. It would just be ultimately cutting the eve.
Cutting the eve, yeah. I I looked at it the other day. It it's it's quite a job, but at least it's not gonna be wasted. It's not gonna look horrible. It's gonna look different because that's not the way it was, you know, it's supposed to be, but yeah, i- i- that's doable, you know. It's gonna take a lot of work, but I I I'll get somebody to do it. I don't I don't have any problem at all. I mean, I'm here neutral, you know, I just wanna get something that everyone's happy and and you know, follow the rules from here on out.
Additional use? Add a concept that could apply here?
No.
No? Is that, I know that has to be renewed every so many years where you're out of compliance.
This is a deviation of of the code, uh that's why we're doing a variance. It's not qualified under a conditional use.
So the only um option is a variance?
Well, I I would say, Othon, maybe if that question, uh cause I I think you're right as to that, that that's not what's in front of them today. But if the council chose to change the code to say you can go up to one foot or two foot with a C U P with certain findings that going forward, that I think um, Mr. Body is a a good option, right? If you could answer that.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I if I can add on to that, I I als- I was also gonna mention that that would that would be a great idea for a lot of the the property owners because those lots, I mean, depending on what your what your pocket looks like, th- those lots are real small. They're small. So yeah, everybody wants to get the most they can out of their lot, blah, blah, blah. And it gets a little weird. It gets a little hard to get everything in there, you know, in that little square, you know, so it pr- it would probably help. I mean, I know what I don't know what it what what the process is to give you a little more room, but you probably make so many ci- city of Imperial like, oh, great, man, now we can, you know, put this here and I can do this, I can that. You know, not being fireproofed, you know, I mean, of course, checking all the all the boxes off. But that would be great for a lot of the people that live that live here in Imperial. You know, it was five feet before. That was ridiculous, man. That was horrible. That was a god, it's it's taken after yard there for that lot. If you have a fifty by one hundred foot lot, you're great. But there in that area, five feet was just like, oh my god, you know. But, you know, follow the rules. Three feet was better. That would be much better. That would be so mu- so nice to, I I'm sure people would probably be a lot happier with that measurement instead of, you know, three feet. They could have more use of the lot.
The city council could modify the the setbacks if they wanted to say in a situation s- like this, they could say the standard setback I think we have is three feet, but if it is a fireproof structure.
Structure, yes.
It could encroach farther, but only under certain conditions.
Correct.
They could make that, they could do that and then it would change our building code.
Not the building code.
Well, I'm talking about they did it in general for the entire city.
It the 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 council can give direction as as to amend as far as what our zoning code would look like, which is what you're looking at a variance accord- in accordance with the zoning code here. But in terms of of amending any kind of building code, that is set by the state and the city council cannot do that.
Okay, so then we're talking about zoning code, not building code.
Correct.
Correct, in this case.
Which is where conditional use permits. It's it's a conditional use within a certain zone.
Kept saying building code and this is zoning.
This is zoning.
Not building.
Correct. That is the distinction.
That's a huge distinction.
Yes. So council can give direction for us to make amendments to bring our zoning code in line with building codes, but as to amend the building code, that's subject to the state of California and and not within the council's jurisdiction.
But but in this case, we're not dealing with.
Correct.
So we're using term building codes and being used when it should be.
No, well, Othon was referring to the building code when he was talking about the overhang.
Yes.
And that's in that aspect, he's.
Yes, staff is staff is correct in in terms of the condition of the before you in terms of a variance is to comply with the building code and so as as both Othon, Jesus and Cody have indicated, that's where that is applicable in this, but you're looking at a variance for the zoning in front of you. What is the square footage of the lot? More or less?
Thousand, I think.
Should be at least six thousand.
At least, yeah, or less, but it's not over the six. That's the standard.
Okay, so you're willing to make the modifications required to keep your post where you're at? And we have two options for that. He can cut back the eve or he can continue the wall down or has it gotta be both?
Um, so he needs to cut the eve regardless where it is right now. Well, in both situations, he needs to cut the o- the eve. So if the posts stay where they are, the eve needs to be flush. So if the posts stay where they are, the eve needs to be flush.
He doesn't have to continue the wall down to the floor. But continuing the wall down to the floor doesn't let him keep his eve? Okay, so then there's no point in that.
Yeah, correct, the the wall doesn't need to be continued uh at all, uh the posts are 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 under the category of the wall.
But I think what you're also so with all of that correct, it and and we're all in agreement as to that. The other option under not the city zoning rules, but under the building code. Would be to remove an awning by putting a wall. You no longer have an an eve, am I right?
Um, so you can have the posts, the posts are under the category of the wall.
I under I'm I'm ignoring the ignore the current posts, right? When you went through that that code section, you were saying that no wanting, we understand that, right? In this particular situation, can he not? Get rid of the awning by not cutting it, but by building a wall, so you no longer have an awning.
Brother, would it look like this?
Yeah, so you're saying cut it back, so you have a flat wall, what I'm saying is in this case, and maybe the measurements are off. Cuz it says no matter what, you can't be within, the awning can't be within two. But you said you could build all the way up to the property line so long as it's a straight, so why not build a wall there? I I guess I'm trying to help everyone understand what the building code. Now, we don't have choices in the building code, which is why I think it's important for you to hear. What the options are as to the building code, completely separate as to the zoning. You're prohibited beyond three if you don't grant a variance, so does that? But I'm asking the question, I I wanna make sure we're right, cuz I think that's one of our biggest hangups is that. This commission does not have a choice at all as to the building code and that's going to be. An expensive process that we cannot get around, no matter what we do. Right, okay.
We could build a wall straight down from the corner of eve and this goes away. Long as it's fire retardant.
You have you have that option.
Fire fire retardant would be steel like it's.
Cutting back the eve is to meet the zoning.
Cutting down.
Uh the building code.
Will meet the building code. So therefore, and that's based on the foundation of the variance being granted. Because once the variance is granted, it's conditioned upon a building permit being issued. And by cutting back the eve. To be flush with the post will meet the building code. Mechanics. What happened to this three feet?
That's a variance issue.
And and maybe I can clarify it, so I as to the zoning side of things, no matter what, he cannot go past three feet. Unless you say. The city council has its own rule. About three feet and you cannot go into that three feet with an awning, with a post, with a wall, with anything. So the only way he can keep and even get to those fire issues. Is if you grant a variance to him. Or if the city council chooses to change it to C U Ps or reduce it from three feet, but you are faced with. A three foot rule, nothing can go inside of that, that's city council. Rule side zoning side and the only way around that is a yes on the variance at this point. Then as to the building code, you've got all this discussion about fire rating and you gotta cut the awning. But no matter what, the current structure is in violation of the building code and will not be able to stay under that as well. So if those two, if if that makes sense how they go together.
So so that wall is, what do we, what do you guys, that wall that? That she was bringing bringing up? That's on the table or or off the table now?
I I think I'm trying to make sure that every single person understands. What those options are from Cody, who's the expert here or from the, you know, the group over there. When we say what is according to the fire code, we cannot get around that, so. It's it's our job to show you the code and say, okay, here are all your options under that code. And so I think all of that is a possibility, so long as it, I don't think we're trying to tell you which way to go under the code. We just have to then get to the second part, which is now we have the three foot issue, which is a separate issue.
Well, if he hypothetically. If you wanted to build a wall. And do go away with eve. He would still need his variance, because it would definitely be.
Build the wall.
Either way.
And and that wall Cody would just uh be like the one that exists right now, just take it. Out to the end and bring it straight down.
That is correct.
It's gonna look ugly, but yes. We're being honest here, but I'll do it, if that's all, if that's what I need to do, I'll do it. And cut the overhang first, then bring the wall down, or or no, leave the overhang and put bring it down, that's what you guys said.
The 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 posts are classified under the wall category. So you can have your posts right at the property line, the three posts you have now with the structure it is now. Yeah, you don't have to build a wall, you don't have to, you know. Build a solid wall there, the the post would be classified as that. So he could put the posts all the way at the end of the property line. And as long as there's no uh projection, the overhang. Then he would be in compliance with the building code.
So it'd be better just to cut the overhang. Get away from all that, that's so much stuff and patio still look.
So if the variance is granted because he's within the three feet, uh to be in compliance with the building code. What he would have to do is to cut the overhang. And then he would be in compliance. Of the building code.
And he just needs a variance from us for the city portion for the.
Yes, this this is step one. To. To that process. Should it should the commission decide to to grant this?
We can grant him a variance with the understanding of removing his eve.
Putting the over the overhang.
Yeah, which. No matter what, yeah, it's yeah.
So then we don't even need to include it in the variance, cuz it's just something that has to be done.
Well, it is a condition in the variance.
Right, you already have it in the conditions of approval. I mean, I just doesn't need to be specifically say. That it needs to be removed or simply implied. Because he has to meet building code, that's what I'm asking, doesn't need to specifically say in the variance.
Correct, I think having the reference that to to comply with the building code is in there, one, because in in the event that there were other alternatives. That should be considered, having ambiguity there allows the applicant. Some discretion in working with the community development department to what is in the best benefit. Of the applicant at that time, but as long as they're within compliance of the building code with our our department.
We're back to the required findings, okay? And se- special circumstances apply to this property. About the size, the shape, the location, the surrounding structures. Second, the variance must meet the intent of the zoning of the parcel. Not detrimental public health, safety, welfare, already dealt with that with respect to it being fireproof. Three, the variance will not be a grant of special privilege in the neighborhood. And will not allow you to build in a way that would not be allowed to someone else. Cuz someone else would have to go through the same step. If they put up a structure similar to Mister Bernal's. And then they were ticketed and then they'd be here. Right? And we'd be doing the same thing. And saying. Why was his special compared to the next one that's an exact duplicate? Fourth, granting the variance or its modifications will not constitute a special privilege. Inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity or zone in which such property is situated. Same thing as number three. Five, the granting of the variance does not allow a user activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized by the zoning regulation government in the parcel. I don't know about that. You know. It's not gonna be uh. Think if it was within three feet, we wouldn't even be in having this meeting. The granting of the variance or its modification will not be incompatible with the city of Imperial general plan. I don't know what that is. But there's a rule of the three feet. And I guess that's part of the city of Imperial general plan of how they want things to look like in the neighborhood. Staff recommends that the planning commission deny the variance. That's what the recommendation is. And I think it's because of the three feet and the fact that not all the points of the variance. Findings required, it says required, that means it's needed to happen. Are met. That's the issue. So even though you cut the eve. And it fits within the two feet. And then it fall within the three feet. The only way to get this, get over, get to that point is to get over the variance hurdle. And the variance hurdle requires we find that these points are met. And I don't, there's six points and I don't see us meeting all six points. Cuz it creates a special privilege. That others could ask for the same thing. That's how I read it. And that's. That's the obstacle I can't overcome.
Alright, um. Any else here we need to? We beat this horse, everything out of this horse we can get. Alright, I'm gonna. Close the public hearing at this time. Seven ten. Stand there or you can have a seat, it's up to you. Alright, folks. It's up to us. So basically, the way I'm reading it right now. Draft resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash zero one. We grant the variance. Then he's gotta take these down. Correct? If we don't grant it, he's gotta. Take it all down or he gets appealed to city council first, which I would. Firmly encourage him to do. So we can make a motion, oh yes, ma'am, sorry.
If the variance is not granted. And Mister Bernal could go to the city council. To consider a C conditional use permit. To. Narrow it down to two feet. Are conditional use permits the type that need to be renewed every so many years? It's not an always thing?
It runs with the land.
It runs with the land, but does the applicant need to renew after so many years?
They do not.
They don't, okay?
Yeah, okay, so you could have a special patio section that makes it a certain requirement, I I would think. We have that flexibility, but it's not there.
What would be the steps that Mister Bernal would need to go through to get a C U P?
I I can answer that, at this point, the zoning codes do not allow it. The only way that 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 option could be done is if the city council gives direction to um. Othon's office to change the rules, then we go through the process and then it would come to you and. We would basically be creating, um, you know, they could request instead of three feet, go with two feet or. Anything, but this option of the conditional use permit would require it to be considered. By the ca- city council and changed.
So it it wouldn't be specific commissioner body to this variance in it in a timely way. We would have to go through the complete process of doing a a zoning text amendment. Um, and and so that would require noticing, public hearing process, et cetera. And ultimately, it would come back before you to do that as as Miss Turner had mentioned. Um, so as to this, they they couldn't, if if this were to go to the council for appeal. Um, it wouldn't be within the context of that specific appeal. That the council would be able to attach a C U P to this, but could give direction and and be revisited at a certain later date.
Grant him his variance and he doesn't wanna cut his eve off, he can still go to the city council and say, yeah, I got this variance, but I really don't wanna lose my eve.
Well, no ma- no matter what, yeah, no matter what that we're um. You cannot uh violate the actual California or fire codes, it's basically like. If if you're required to have uh sprinklers in your building under under California building code. No matter what we do or what our council says, we have no choice.
Got too many things running around in my head, starting to start a spider web together.
So, yeah, the action before you is specific to the zoning, the variance in the zoning code. Not the the condition in that variance that references the building code.
Motion. Keep it as is, we don't have to. Make any modifications to it. Right? That's my understanding. Alright, is there a motion to uh?
I have a question first.
Okay, I apologize.
How long has this um subdivision been in place? It's been a few years, like three years, four years?
More than that, um, we have a.
Then that's, okay, so my next question, um. With that being said, there must be other properties there with variances. For. Structures somewhat. Similar.
Uh, within the vicinity, I don't recall anything with patios, I. I kind of remember one for swimming pool.
There's a swimming pool one. Doing that one.
But yes, and so they went from five feet to three feet. And that's one of, you know, one of the reasons uh as to why we changed it to.
Car structures, I've seen them. In that in those neighborhoods. Some pretty large.
Or they're just there, or they're just there without the variance.
If I may. And also in as part of whatever whatever action you are are considering or or ends up being the motion here. You can also make a recommendation the council consider. Looking at the zoning, you know, not just because of this situation and and that we began the process of working with the city council to. Bring our zoning in line with building codes or just examining those things.
That's separate from the.
Absolutely, you can do it as part of or separate from whichever.
We need to do that, but I think we can. It's not settled at what this man. We can discuss that under. Commissioner's reports. Okay, any other questions?
I'm glad to see Mister Paul, obviously, uh it's he's he's here today and he's willing to. To um. I feel like this time around, he has a little more. Willingness to adjust on there, whether it's cut, add to. I mean, it's been there, it's there's some compromise, I mean, that that thing has been there. Is that seventeen?
Seventeen sound right?
Oh, yeah. And and say say we 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 kill this right here right now, he goes to the city council, city council. Sends us back down the road and in July. We come back to this again. And the man still has the patio.
Takes us out of the loop.
What were you gonna say though back in July?
Well, I mean, it it would, by the time we put it back on, you know, it goes to the city council, it comes back to us, you know, it.
Why would it come back, it would come back to us?
If the if the council gave the direction for for staff to amend the to do a zoning text amendment to a lot, to allow for, you know, certain. Considerations of that this would come back to the commission as part of that public.
And that's that's considering that that we would right now stop this and say, no, we're not, it would still come back.
Good potentially.
It it would still potentially.
Other questions? Alright, then I'll. Call for a motion. For draft resolution P C twenty twenty-three dash zero one. I'll make it. Make a motion, we approve or deny. Uh, PC twenty twenty-three dash zero one, there a second? Well, if we go approve and everybody votes no, then it's denied.
To, the motion have.
Approve. Hello, second that. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Motion carries with three yeses and one no.
Alright, you're off and dealing with them to see what you can fix.
Mister Bernal, yes, I know it's, uh, it's, as you said, it's ugly, uh, but. Uh, we, you saw where we wrangled it, uh, we, we, it was like trying to put lipstick on a pig, um. Thank you, sir, for saying that.
Thank you so much, and you are free to leave if you want, unless you wanna enjoy the rest of our, uh. Our meeting. It's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a ripper. I can tell you, man, it's gonna be something. Alright. So now we'll go to commissioners reports. Commissioner Body, do you have anything you'd like to talk about? Commissioner River, I, I mean Rivera?
Um, I wanna thank, uh, the city, uh, staff for taking care of that hole that was at the corner of La Bruxa and. Aiden, that was, uh, taken care of. Quickly, very quickly. Uh, unless somebody randomly dropped some trash in that hole, but it's, uh, running really smooth now. Um, I am watching something, uh, traffic, uh, I got a phone call about, um, a lot of. Speeding on, uh, Nuevo Vallarta and, uh, the corner of Nuevo Vallarta and, uh, eight, um, Clark. Um, I'm gonna get some more details on that. Um, the residents in that area, um, might be interested in, in making a presentation or, uh, speaking, giving us a little more insight. As to, um, some of the traffic concerns in, in that area, so, sir, um. I'll gather the, uh, the folks there and, and see what they can tell us about that. I just found out here about twenty-four hours ago, so I'm still gathering the evidence, um. Graffiti? Now that's it for today, uh, I'll get, I'll get back to you guys on that, that's all I got for today.
Mr. Hardy?
Just wanted to follow up on the fifth planning commission, planning commissioner status.
Um, yes, I can, I can answer that, it is our intent to have an appointment before the city council at the next meeting. So, you should have someone joining your, joining your board at your first meeting in March.
That's it for me.
Point our merry band? So. We talked about the water at, uh. Rodeo and fifteenth? In the gutter?
He did receive a citizen complaint, um, I do believe our community development department, our, our code enforcement actually has been out to the area and had. Has made contact with the business, that seems to be contributing to, to some of that area over there.
Well, it dried up for a while and now we're just back to having water again.
Correct, they, they fixed it, so we, uh, contacted them today. Um, so something to do with the, the timer, so they'll fix it within. Oh, within twenty-four hours, that's what they said.
I just like the fact you got a pothole fixed, I still have a street light behind my house, it lights up my bedroom like so bright, I can read a book, but. At least you got your pothole fixed, I still got my street light. Yeah, it's that bright, those LEDs are. They're great unless you're on the second floor of your house, and then it's like, yeah, that really sucks. I don't have to use my electricity. Uh, staff reports. Work our way around the room. Cody?
Out of this thing. Here, I would, I would just say, uh, the director of the public, uh, services department, Jackie Loper is here. And, and he's the one that hears about potholes, so his folks would have been the ones to fix.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody back there wanna make a report? Captain? So I understand our chief retired?
Yes.
He already, he's already officially. So, are you running the ship right at the moment?
For now, yes.
Okay. So, I wanted to call you, uh. Prevent chief? Yes, sir. We pass questions, sorry, you're out of luck. Now, what are they?
Um, announcement on the, uh, cancellation of, um. Saturday, and can you explain to us the, uh, grant we received?
Oh, uh, yes, so, so for, for those that have not seen the news, um, just in light of the weather forecasts that we have received. Um, we're, we're working closely with the Imperial County Office of Emergency Services, uh, thank you to those staff members that are. Uh, working hand in hand with National Weather Service, given the, the high wind advisory we've received recently. Um, we are forecasted to receive rain, um, starting Thursday through, uh, Sunday, we recognize it could be off and on. Um, and just in recognition of the significant investments that our, our vendors make in order to participate. And especially with the tri-tip cookoff and the price of meat, um, in meeting with those vendors, uh, our, our staff. Contacted everybody and really felt that it was the right decision to postpone. Um, and, uh, the vendors were, um, appreciative of that, and so we wanna work and all have confirmed for March twenty-fifth. So, uh, we encourage the community to come out and participate, the entertainment, uh, has also confirmed. So we'll still have our lucha libre, as well as the, um, country entertainment, uh, Daniel Monte and then Jasmine Fields, so. Still sure to be a fun evening in our, in our downtown, um, from four PM to nine PM that day. Uh, so that is the Blues Brews and Barbecue Event, uh, and we look forward to that within a month. Um, and get past all the, the other wonderful festivities such as the fair that's coming up, the Blue Angels Air Show. Um, and then the Sun Runner's Car Show that will also be taking place, so that'll get us through to that fourth weekend. Um, in terms of the, the grant, the city of Imperial was excited to, um, announce that, uh, both. Um, US senators Feinstein and Padilla did see fit to put in, uh, one point two million in the fiscal year twenty-three. Congressionally directed spending, um, as part of the omnibus that was passed. Um, for the city of Imperial to be awarded one point two million for a community kitchen incubator project. So more information forthcoming, um, it's an exciting, uh, way to work with entrepreneurs within, um. The city of Imperial, but also it will be open to the region, um, we will give first consideration to Imperial-based entrepreneurs. Um, and then, um, reaching out to, to others as well, um, so it is a opportunity to partner. With the private sector, um, to revitalize, uh, vacant facility. Uh, that would establish the community kitchen and also allow, um, the entrepreneurs to test out their product. Um, so anyone that's looking to start a food truck, or anyone that's currently in a food truck but wants to test out a, a restaurant. And, and the city can partner with them, uh, to see if we can create something. And, and continue to promote, uh, nightlife in Imperial.
We just could pass one that'll help us with our streets. One, one thing at a time.
Here's hoping.
One thing at a time.
We throw a lot of projects in the pot, it's not, uh, we don't know what the either. Um, any of our federal representatives are gonna pull out of the hat, we're just thankful when they do choose to pull something out of the hat, so it just happened to be this project. So hopefully the next one will be, will be able to get some monies for. Fix more potholes.
Something's better than nothing.
Yeah.
That's for sure. Anything else from anybody? Good, alright, I'm gonna close the door, last chance. Uh, I'm gonna close this. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting of the Imperial Planning Commission at seven twenty-nine. Meeting is adjourned.